So here we go. Boom. Oh. Alright, so take a look at the first one. We want x approaching 2's limit. Okay, so what do you think?
4. No, 4.
Um, okay, so let's find 2. So 2 is here. And then remember that we have to approach 2 from both sides and they have to match.
Oh.
For a limit to exist, right? Yeah, so from this side, what's my limit? And then from this side, what's my limit? 1. So then you would say this limit is DNE. Okay, if it doesn't exist, explain why, because the limit as x approaches 2, how do we say from the left? A little minus sine good of f of x is 4, but... And then you would just state the other side limit. So limit x approaching 2 from the right. Okay, it came out to be, hey, uh, 1. Okay? Okay, look at number 2. We have x approaching 1. Okay, as we draw in our line, check both sides. What is the left side approaching? 2, what about the right side? 2, and if they're both 2, then it's 2. Okay, take a look at the next one. We want the limit as x approaches 1 of sine f of x. Remember that the limit applies to the center function first. So we're gonna find the limit as x approaches 1 of sine x or of f of x. And then we'll plug that answer in to sign when we're done. But the limit applies to the center function first for compositions. So look at your graph. What is the limit as I approach 1 from both sides?
On that.
On f? It'd be 2. And even though this dot is somewhere else, nobody cares. You're just looking at as I trace closer and closer to 1. Okay, my y-values are getting closer to 2. Then I would want whatever the sine of 2 is. Okay, and then notice you don't have to know the sine of 2 because it's not one of your reference angles like pi or pi halves. Um, alright, number 4. We want x approaching 1 on the function of g. Then we're gonna plug that into e. So look at your function for g. What is x approaching 1's limit for that one? We did it earlier, then it would be e squared. Very good. Okay, also remember e to the 0 would give you 1 and e to the 1 would give you regular e. So just depending on what that number is. Um, okay, try the next one, number 5. This time we want the limit as x approaches 1 on g of f. Which graph do I look at first? Okay, f is correct. And then once I get that answer, I'm gonna plug it into g. So on f's graph, as I get closer to 1, what is it? Uh huh, 2. And then what's g of 2? 1 is correct. Hey babe, what's up?
I happen to know if this is a dishwasher.
Um, I do not know that, sorry. If you're not sure, just run them again. I don't think I ran them. So just run it again. Okay, sorry, I'm in the middle of tuning. I gotta go. Love you, bye. Um, okay, so I made this and I guess I forgot to change the answers. Okay, uh, look at the next one. X is approaching 1. This time it's g of f. Or f of g, where do I apply first? G. What's the limit for 1 on function g? 2, then I want f of 2. And then when I go to f of 2, what is f of 2? Okay, but is there a closed dot? At f of 2? This is an open, that one's a closed. Okay, but I don't know if you remember, here's the rule. You're only allowed to do the plug it into the inside and then plug it into the second one if the second graph is connected. So this is a DNE. Okay, because even though I do have a value for g of 2, okay, it's not connected. So the first limit has to exist and give you a number. And then when you go to that number on the second graph, it has to be connected there or you can't use that property. Okay, take a look at the next one. X approaching 1 on f. As I approach 1 on graph f, what's my limit? 2. And then when I go to 2 on the same graph, what's the problem? Okay, disconnected, so it's DNE. Okay, one more left on this page. X approaching 1 of g of g. What's the limit as we approach 1? 2, and then g of 2? Is 1. Okay? So that's kind of the process with those. Go ahead and jump. Okay, the next thing we're gonna go over is if you try to plug in the number and it doesn't work. So take a look at the first one. Okay, as x approaches 3, my first, uh, strategy we'll say is just to plug the 3 in. So what would I get on top if I plug in 3 squared plus 7? So that'd be 9 plus 7, which is 16. Okay, then on the bottom, I'll plug in my 3 here. 3 plus 1 is 4. 16 divided by 4 is 4. Okay, number 2, I tried the same strategy. X is approaching 2. So I try to plug it in, but what happens when I do 2 squared minus 4 on top? It's 0. What about 2 minus 2 on bottom? 0. Remember, whenever it's 0 over 0, do more. Do more. Okay, that means a lot of times you can fix it. Okay, and the way you can do more is to factor cancel. So x squared minus 4, how can that break down? Uh huh. Plus 2 and minus 2 because that's a perfect square. Versus on the bottom, I also had an x minus 2. So then what's gonna cross out? The x minus 2's are gone. And then with whatever pieces of the equation are left over, you could just plug in what x is approaching. So if it's approaching 2, you could just plug it in right there. 2 plus 2 then gives you 4. Good. Okay, take a look at the next one. What do we get on top when we plug in 2? Okay, that'd be 2 squared is 4, minus 9 is negative 5. But what about 2 minus 2? 0. Can you do more on that?
Yes.
That is DNE. Okay, also remember, what if you had gotten a 0 on top and a 5 on bottom?
That would be.
That would be 0. So remember, it's okay to get the 0 on the top. But no, you can't have 0 on the bottom. It's DNE. Okay, and then if it's a 0 over 0, that's a do more. Okay, um, then let's fill in this part right here. If your factor in the denominator cancels, that creates a hole in the graph, which means that your limit does exist. Okay, you could say like it's fixable. Okay, versus if you have a factor in the denominator that doesn't cancel, that would create a vertical asymptote. And those limits do not exist. Okay, Ash, you gotta put in headphones to go to the hallway. Sorry babe, love you. Alright. Um, okay, questions on that? Um, and then also, they don't call it a hole on the AP test. Do you remember the actual term?
Removable.
Yes. Okay, so a hole is a removable discontinuity. Yeah, in pre-Cal, we call it a hole. But that's the technical term for you to use. Now, there are multiple ways to do more. Factor cancel is the easiest. Okay, but we also learned L'Hopital's rule. Here's what L'Hopital's rule says. If you have a limit and you plug in x approaching a number, let's say that it's a, and it gives you 0 over 0. Then what you can do is retry the limit. Still x approaching a, but take the derivative of the top and the bottom. Okay, and if when you take the derivative of the top and the bottom and you replug in that limit, if it works, then the limit counts as fixable. Okay, so let's take a look at number 4. What is x approaching? What number? E. Then if I plug in an e here, I'd have ln of e minus 1 over e minus e. And then the ln of e, those cross out and that is 1. So ln and e cross out to a 1, and then what's 1 minus 1? 0. E minus e is, which means? Okay, do, yeah, do more. Okay, so we're gonna take the derivative of the top and the bottom separately, not a quotient rule, and then we'll try the limit again. So what is the derivative of ln x minus 1? You remember the derivative of ln x? It is 1 over x. What about the minus 1 part?
Goes away.
Goes away. Constance go to 0. Okay, then on the bottom, x minus e, what's the derivative of x? 1, and then e is a constant. So it'll go to what? Ooh, e to the x goes to e to the x. What does e alone go to? 0, because it's a constant. Okay, then from there, we're gonna retry the limit as x approaches. What will we get on top when we plug that in? 1 over e, and then technically it's divided by 1, but your answer would be 1 over e. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Alright, take a look at the next one. Go ahead and plug in 0. What would we get on the top if we plug in a 0 here? Uh, what is, so it'd be sine of 0. And what's sine of 0? It's 0. So this is 0, then this is 0, and when you subtract 2 zeros, you get 0. Okay, then same thing on the bottom. Your 0 squared plus sine of, what's 3 times 0 when I plug that in here? Still a 0 and then sine of 0 gives you 0, blah blah blah. Okay, so take the derivative of the top and the derivative of the bottom, case separately. So we're doing 7x minus sine x and then x squared plus sine 3x. And then snow cone, snow cone. Remember, for derivatives, you're going down. So what will 7x go to? Just a 7. What will negative sine go to? Negative cosine x. Okay, on the bottom, what will x squared go to? And then for sine 3x, this one's a little bit tricky, but it's chain rule. What's the derivative of sine? Cosine 3x. And then do you remember that you have to times by the derivative of 3x? Gives you an extra 3. Do you remember that? And then what are we trying? Are x approaching? 0. Do we remember the cosine of 0? It is 1. Good. So then on top, I have 7, take away cosine of 0 is 1. That gives me what? 6. Okay, then on the bottom, what's 2 times 0 here? What's 2 times 0 for the 2x? That'd just be 0, but then what's 0 times 3?
1.
So 0 times 3 is 0, then cosine of 0 is 1. And then 1 times the 3 gives you 3. And then 6 divided by 3 is 2. Does that make sense? You have a question or just kind of thinking about it?
So the cosine of 3 guys.
Yeah, so you'd have 2 times 0 plus cosine 3 times 0 times 3. And then what's 3 times 0?
Yeah.
So that'd be cosine 0. And then the cosine of 0 goes to a 1, and then the 1 times 3 goes to a 3. So you have to kind of like start in the middle and then kind of work your way out. Yes. Okay, now take a look at the next one. This is a little bit weird. Okay, but if you kind of think about it, it should make sense. They're telling you that f of 0 and g of 0 both come out to 0, and they're asking you to find this limit. Okay, so let's start by writing the limit as x approaches 0. This is what I want of f over g. Okay, well then what would I do with x approaching 0? I would take that and I would plug it into both x's, right? So then what would I have on top? F of 0. What would I have on bottom? And then what does it tell me here? Both of those equal. 0 over 0, which means I have to do more. Then L'Hopital's rule says I can take the derivative of the top and the bottom and then try the limit again. What would the derivative be though of f? And what did they tell you? f prime is right here. Cosine x. And then the bottom was g. Well then what's the derivative of g? It'd be g prime, which they tell me here is 1. And then what am I plugging in x to be? 0. So then if you plug in x approaching 0 into cosine, you'd have the cosine of 0 over 1. What's the cosine of 0? So 1 over 1, which gives you 1. Kind of makes sense? Um, okay, uh, just a couple more limits left. Look at the next page. If x is going to infinity, that is how you find horizontal and vertical asymptotes. You do Boba bottom, Bed C. Okay, so take a look at that next page, please. Okay, for the first one, is it a Bobo, a bottom, or Bed C? Sure, we can go over it. So Bobo means bigger on bottom goes to 0. Bigger on bottom is y equals 0. And remember, what these tell you is what the ends of the graph are doing. So if your bigger functions on the bottom, the ends of the graph are horizontal asymptoting out to 0. Okay, bottom is bigger on top. And that means that you don't have an asymptote, no horizontal asymptote, which means that your ends are either going up or down, but they're not like curving off towards a specific number. Okay, and then the last one, it says E P F, but we changed it to Bed C a couple years ago and I forgot to change it. So that's both equal. Then divide the coefficients on those terms. Okay, now also remember, you're not necessarily doing just the front term. You're looking for the highest power on top or on bottom. So if I'm looking at number 7, the only thing on top is a 4n squared. But what's the biggest thing on bottom?
N squared.
N squared. Even though the n has a thousand on it, you're comparing powers. So then 4n squared versus n squared? Oh. It's Bed C because remember the powers are equal. You're comparing the exponent. So if it's a squared versus a squared, that's a tie. Then I'll do 4 divided by 1. So that's a Bed C. Okay, so it's both equal. They're both quadratic. Then I do 4 divided by 1 and I get 4. Okay, take a look at number 8. This one's in factored form. You don't have to factor out the whole thing. Just pick the biggest terms that you actually care about to see what you would get. If it's a 2x minus 1 times a 3x, 3 minus x, what's the highest power on top? x squared. And then on bottom, you have an x times an x. What's that? Another x squared, which means is it a Bobo, a bottom, or Bed C? Bed C. Okay, now be really careful. What is the power or what is the coefficient on the top? Why is it negative? Yes, because it's a 2x times a minus x. That makes it a minus 2x squared. What's the coefficient on the bottom? x times x is just a 1. So then, yeah, negative 2 divided by 1 gives you negative 2. All good on that? Alright, take a look at the next one. It says for x is greater than 0, the line y equals 2 is an asymptote for the function. Now, which way does y equals 2 go? What kind of line is that? It's horizontal. So that if I go to 2, okay, I do not know what my graph is doing in the middle. But I know that somewhere towards the end, it curves off to 2. Okay, and then maybe somewhere towards this end, it curves off to 2. Okay, but that's what a horizontal asymptote would look like. Okay, so also, um, never mind, we won't say that. Okay, so do I know that at 0, the y-value's 2? Is that what a horizontal asymptote tells you?
No.
No. Look at b. B is actually a pretty tricky question. Here's what it says. f of x never equals 2. Now, for a lot of asymptotes, then the equation doesn't ever get to that number, right? Let's say it gets closer and closer to 2, but it never gets there. That's at the end of the graph, though. Could it cross somewhere in the middle and hit 2? Sure. So this is actually wrong. It doesn't hit 2 towards the end of the graph. But it could still cross it somewhere else. That actually is still allowed. Okay, then it says f of 2 is undefined. Okay, well, 2 is a y-value, not an x-value. Okay, and then out of these 2, which one do you think is right here? It is e, because what should x be going towards? x should go towards infinity and then f is curving to 2. Very good. Now, let's talk about d for a second. What type of asymptote is d? That's a vertical asymptote. And if you want to kind of just draw a picture of it, if x approaching 2 goes to infinity, then that means that as you get closer and closer to the x-value of 2, your graph is going up to infinity. That's what question or answer choice d would look like, is a vertical asymptote. Okay? Alright, let's take a look at, the next section is gonna be continuity and differentiability. Your graph is continuous if it's connected. Okay, that's the only stipulation, is you can't have any skips. You can't have any holes. Okay, the graph has to be connected all the way through. Okay, differentiable means it has to be smooth. So if it's differentiable, it cannot have any cusps, corners, vertical asymptotes, or discontinuities. So looking at this graph, it says f is shown above. Where is f continuous but not differentiable? It is a, because is it connected at a?
Yeah.
Yes, but it's not differentiable because it's a cusp. Okay? Um, why does b not count? Correct. It says it has to be continuous. Okay, and at that hole, that's not continuous. Okay, what's wrong with c? It's continuous and differentiable, right? Okay, because it's a smooth curve. Those count as differentiable. Okay, then d doesn't count as continuous. Okay? Alright, and then one more thing I do want to draw. If you have a graph that does this, um, let's say it goes like that. Okay, that would also count as continuous but not differentiable. And the reason why is that differentiable means that you can find the slope or the derivative at that point. So if it goes vertical, the problem is that your slope is undefined, so you can't find it. So a vertical tangent and then cusps and corners are all continuous but not differentiable. Alright, turn the page. Um, alright, so we have a graph is continuous if, here are the three rules. You have a study sheet that says this, but we'll just go over it real quick. Okay, the first thing is that you have to have a y-value. So when you plug the number in, you have to be able to like find a y-value for that point. Okay, the second thing is that your limit as x approaches a also has to exist. And then do y'all remember the third thing? What has to be true about the limit and the y-value? Well, for the third thing, your y-value and your limit just have to be the same. Here's why. Think about, let me draw you a little graph here. Does my limit exist for that graph I just drew? Well, is it the same on both sides?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, does my y-value exist? But is it continuous? Well. Yeah, so this is not continuous because you have a limit. You have a y-value, but if they're not the same, then it's not continuous. So the third step is that your y-value and your limit have to be the same number essentially. Okay, otherwise holes would be continuous because you have a limit, you have a y-value, and they're not the same. Now, differentiable, you add one more step. The limit as x approaches a from the left for the derivative has to equal the limit as x approaches a for the right side of the derivative. So for continuity, you're looking at the original f. Versus for differentiability, you're looking at the derivative. Okay, so let's take a look at the next one when you're ready. First thing it says is, let's show that it is continuous. Step number 1, continuous at 0 means that f of 0 has to exist. Where will I plug in 0? To the top of the piecewise or the bottom? Top or bottom? Top is correct. How do you know? Because it has less than or equal to 0. Very good. So I'm gonna plug it into the top. So it'd be 1 minus 2 sine x is now a 0. And then do we remember what the sine of 0 is? Cosine of 0 is 1. What's sine of 0? 0. So then this whole thing crosses out and it's really just 1. Okay, next, we're gonna find the limit from the left and the right. Make sure that they're the same. As x approaches 0 from the left, I'd be plugging into what I just plugged into, and I already got 1. So I'm not gonna redo that because I already plugged into the left side limit and I got 1. Now let's plug into the right side limit. x approaches 0 from the right. I'd have e to the negative 4, x is now a 0. What's negative 4 times 0?
0.
And e to the 0 is the same as 1. So my left and my rights came out the same, then I know my limit exists. Okay, in the third step, steps 1 and 2 have to just be equal to each other. So my y-value is 1. My limit came out to be 1. Then in the third step, I can say, okay, those were the same, then I know it's continuous. Okay, so I'll put f of 0 equals the limit as x approaches 0. Check, therefore, continuous. Okay, next one says determine whether or not it's differentiable. For differentiable, you need to make sure the limits match on both sides. So we're gonna take our original s and we're gonna write the derivative of those two pieces. So let's put it down here. Okay, f prime of x equals, it's still piecewise. What is the derivative of the top 1 minus 2 sine x? So 1 will go to what? Nothing. And then what's the derivative of negative sine? So let's write it out. Snow cone, snow cone. And derivatives, I'm going down. So it'll be negative 2 cosine for all the x's less than 0. What about for the bottom one, it's e to the negative 4x? What's the derivative of e to the negative 4x? Uh huh, times what though? Do you remember? If it's e to the u, you keep it e to the negative 4x, but then you have to times by the derivative of that u. Yeah, so just a negative 4. That's your chain rule, where you have e not to the x, but x with something else. Okay, that's for all the x's greater than 0. And then what are we wanting to check to see if it's differentiable? What do we do? Just basically plug in 0 for each part. So let's do it for this one first. Okay, what you're gonna call this is the limit of f prime of x as x approaches 0 from the left. But make sure you put a prime here to show you're not plugging into the original. You're checking f primes to see if they match. And then negative 2 cosine x. But what's the cosine of 0? 1, so negative 2 times 1 gives you negative 2. Okay, now let's check it for the bottom one. We're still plugging in 0. So I'll write the limit as x approaches 0 from the right side of f prime of x is negative 4e to the negative 4 times 0. But then what's negative 4 times 0?
0.
0, and then e to the 0 is? 1, so it'll be. One, so it'll be negative four. Then is it differentiable? No, so therefore not differentiable. I really kind of want to do the next two, but I think we can run through this one pretty quickly. Okay, first question, if they're asking you if the limits are the same, what do we do? Here's your equation right here. What'd you say? Yeah, just plug it in. So plug in two to the top. What do you get? Uh huh, good. So this side comes out to be ln of one. ln of one. And if you don't know, ln of one is zero, okay? But pretend you didn't know that. Just call it ln of one. Okay, now plug in two on the bottom. What do you get? Four times two is eight. Eight minus seven is one. Are those the same? No, so we know that that statement is false. Now, quick question. If the Y values aren't the same, is it continuous? Then can it be differentiable? No. So that automatically makes statement three false. Okay, that if it's not continuous, not continuous, that automatically means it's not differentiable either. Okay, automatically. So one and three pretty much are both out, and that actually eliminates all three of those other interferences, which means it has to be B. Now, just because I want to remind you of how to take the derivative of ln, I'm gonna have us actually work out the second part of that. So what's the derivative of? So it's ln four X minus seven and then four X minus seven. What's the derivative for this side? This is the easier side. Okay, just be four. Okay, now let's plug in the derivative on this side. Do you remember the derivative of ln X? Okay, good. So then what's the derivative of ln of U? It's one over U times U prime. So you still put it one over U, but then whatever your U was, you have to multiply its derivative at the back. That's all chain rule. So what I always do for that, I think that looks ugly, is I just combine it into one fraction, U prime over U. That way you don't have like a fraction times something else. So what is my U in ln four X minus seven? It'd be one over four. Well, hold on, U is the original. So it'd be four X minus seven on bottom. And then what will U prime be for the top? Just a four, and then what X are we plugging in? Two. And if I plug in a two to that, do you see how on the bottom you get eight minus seven, which is one? And then it comes out to four over one, which is four, and so these end up matching. Okay, but even though the derivatives both match, it's still not considered differentiable because it wasn't continuous in the first place. Okay, so that one would be B. That one would be B. All right, turn the page. Let's see if we can get through these. This one says my equation needs to be differentiable. If it has to be differentiable, what else does it have to be? Has to be continuous. Very good. So this tells me two things. Okay, if it's differentiable and continuous, then the original left and rights have to be equal, and the derivatives of left and right have to be equal. So we're gonna do this in two parts. We're gonna set the left equal to the right, and we're gonna set left prime equal to right prime. So hopefully you kind of know what I mean by that. Let's start with left and right. What is my left side equation? X plus two B. And that needs to equal A X squared. And then what is my X? Two. So then I have two plus two B and A times two squared. And then what is two squared over here? So I have two plus two B equals four A. Okay, and then we'll just kind of box that for now. Okay, not only do the originals have to be equal, that makes it continuous, but the derivatives have to be equal. So what's the derivative of X plus two B? Let's start with the X. What's the derivative of just the X? One. And then what's the derivative of two B if B is just a number? Zero. Okay, don't say like it's just two, right? If B is a number, then two B is a number, which means it goes to zero. So then equals, what's the derivative of A X squared? Uh huh, you'll times the two down. It'll be a two A, and then your X drops down to the first power, and then what's X? What number? Two. Uh huh, so that's a four A, which means that A is what? By by four on both sides. And A has to be one fourth. Say that again? Good question, because for the two B, okay, think about, that's just a constant by itself. Versus if this was like a five X squared, I would times the two down on the five and then lower the X power. So if it constants with an X, it gets to stick around. It's only when it's alone that it'll cross out. Okay, so then from there, we have two plus two B equals four times a fourth. And then what is four times a fourth? Okay, that'd be one, because the fours would cross out essentially. Then I can minus that two across. Two B equals one minus two is negative one, and then divide by two. You'll get B equals minus a half, which is A. Okay. One more, I think we can finish. And then actually, I'm gonna skip that so we can do this last page here, because I don't want to not get to this. Okay, the definition of a derivative, okay, is kind of a stupid formula. Okay, that is how the long way for finding a derivative. Yes, you haven't seen it in a while, okay, but you remember it? Good. Okay, we worked out maybe like four derivatives, the long way, and it took like an hour. Okay, so all that you have to do is find the function they want you to take the derivative of, and then take the derivative of it. So circle where your F is, and then just find F prime. So look at example number one. What's in the spot of F of X? Sine two X. Do I include the negative or no? No, because it's part of the formula. That's exactly right. Then what's, take the derivative of sine two X? So sine will go to cosine two X, and then is there anything else we're missing? Times an extra two, because why? It's chain rule. So it's sine two X. Then the sine goes to a cosine, but you keep the two X the same, and you have to times by an extra two. Okay, then for the next one, what's your equation? Okay, and ln X, what's the derivative? One over X. Go to the last page. Very, very last page. Let's do six. Very similar. Okay, it's tan three X plus H minus tan three X over H. Okay, what would my function be? Tan three X, and do we remember the derivative of tan three X? Seek and squared three X, that's it? Times three. So it'd be B, correct? Okay, then last one I'll make you do, since we're pretty close. Try number five. X is approaching zero. What do you need to do? Hold on. First, what, did you plug in zero already? It is do more, because look, you do E to the zero is one, and then you minus one. No, it's not. And oh, good, good point. Definition of a derivative is H approaching zero, and they'll always use an H for definition. And then you plug in a zero for the X on the bottom. You just get a zero, which means it's do more. What is our strategy? Can we factor cancel that? What rule do you need? Okay, what's it? You remember what's called? L'Hopital's. Okay, this doesn't matter, just in case you're wondering, that's for me. Okay, so take the derivative of the top and the bottom, and then retry the limit. Okay, tell me the derivative of the top when you have it. E to the X minus one. Still E to the X. What happens to the minus one? Goes away. What about X on the bottom? One, and then I retry X approaching zero. E to the zero gives you one over one, which means, does it actually exist? It's one. Makes sense? Okay, good job.
Wow, we finished kind of a lot of that package.